All right. I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole, for January 23rd, 2024 at 5:10 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alderperson's Wolf?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Terrence?
Here.
Kapusta?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Alderperson Kabaki is absent. Alderperson Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, January 19th, 2024.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of minutes from the committee, the whole, Janu-- I'm sorry, November 13th, 2023, and December 12th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business. Would you bring Ashley in? Interviews for applicants for District 4 Alderman. Hello.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Ashley. How are you doing?
How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
How do you pronounce your last name? Because I don't want to butcher it.
Netashime.
Just like it's spelled. All right.
You got it.
I'm Rick Petfalski. I'm the mayor of City of Muskego. I think for starts before, I'll go over the ground rules, but I think we'll have everyone introduce themselves. We'll start with the council president, Eileen Madden.
Hi, Eileen Madden, District 7.
Deb Schrader, District 5.
Jeff Warsh, City Attorney.
Yep.
We are at Wolf City Clark.
I'm Tom Kapusta, District 4.
Nice to meet you in person.
John Terrence, District 3.
Bob Hamel, District 2.
Rob Wolf, District 1.
Great. Nice to meet everybody.
Thanks for coming out tonight. So, I kind of went over this on the phone, but I'll go over it again, probably for the alderman's benefit as well. We have a list of 10 questions that will be asked. Each alderman will ask two questions, and then I've got one at the end. You'll read the question. You'll have an opportunity-- actually, we'll start with-- first, we'll let you introduce yourself.
Sure.
And then we'll go through the questions. And then, any-- after any of the questions, if any of the aldermen has a follow-up to your question or to your answer, they can ask it at that point.
Great.
And everyone will be going through the same process. Any questions?
Not yet. Am I allowed to ask any at the end?
You are.
Great. I'll save them for then.
All right. Want to start with your introduction?
Yeah, sure. My name is Ashley Netashime. I have lived in Muskego for approximately seven years. My husband and I moved to the Kristen Downs subdivision back in 2017, and we now have three kids, ages eight, six, and three. And we live in just a fantastic cul-de-sac. We have real good friends with our neighbors. We love that subdivision. I have a background in politics, so I got my bachelor's in politics, as you can see on my resume. And even though this was at the collegiate level, I do have some experience in the political realm. I ran for student government president my senior year and was elected. So, even though that is at a collegiate level and is not super professional, it's still, I would say, that actually gave me a lot of leadership skills and was one of my more exciting experiences in college. Since then, I've had a couple of jobs where I've really built a lot of partnerships in the community. I'm used to working with people in the community, talking with them. I'm now a small business owner. Once my husband and I decided we wanted to start having kids, I decided I still wanted to work full-time, but I wanted to be at home with them as well. So, I decided to start up an in-home daycare business, so I've been doing that quite a while, which has been an awesome opportunity for me. So, I get to do that in Muskego, so I work in Muskego. And then, in addition to that, I have also been volunteering on our subdivision's homeowners' association board for about the last five years. So, I started off in 2018, just as a board member, and then I took over the role of president. This is my-- I'm starting my third year as HOA president. So, I would say, in regards to the skills I've gained from that, this is kind of what prompted me to run or to apply for a District 4 alderman. I love being involved in my community. I've really, really enjoyed the experience that I've had on my HOA board. It's provided a lot of leadership communication skills. I've gotten to know a lot of the people in my subdivision really well, so I'm happy to expand on that. I know this is just an opening statement, so I won't get too long-winded. So, somebody on our HOA board actually sent me the information for this opening, so I just decided to apply. I think the other reason that I wanted to apply is simply, I know I stated this in my cover letter, I really love living in Muskego. I feel very passionate about the community that we live in. I love all of the residents. I've gotten to know my subdivision. We have great small businesses here, so I just thought that this would be a really great opportunity for me to get more involved in the community and give something back.
All right. Well, Alderman Wolf will start and kind of rolls into some of your intro, but-- and some of these questions might repeat to part of the questions that you have already answered, but maybe you just want to expand upon it if they do.
Oh, yeah. And I'll try not to get too repetitive.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Why are you interested in the position of becoming an alderperson? And the second part is, why did you apply for this position?
So, maybe I should have given just a more brief opening statement, right? So, some of this will be a little repetitive. Again, I think I have two main reasons why I was compelled to apply for this position. The first is simply that I gained a lot from being the homeowners' association board president, so I think that's what kind of led me to-- just to realize I might like and enjoy something like this. I like working in group settings. I like being involved in my community. I like to give back. So, there was-- as I thought about who was in District 4 and the businesses that are in District 4, we utilize them all the time. So, you know, if we want to go get subs, we head over to Lakeside Subs. We were pretty sad when Nico's Cafe closed. We walked around the bend to Pop's Pub all the time if we want to go have some pizza and let the kids play. We just had our kid's birthday party at Alpine Lane. So, as I'm thinking about all of these different businesses in our community, I just thought, okay, a lot of these are in District 4. I really feel like I could represent them. We know a lot of different people who live in the subdivisions in District 4. So, again, just a desire to be more involved in giving back. Does that answer?
Now, the second part of these questions, I think she's pretty much answered. I'll put it out there, and you guys let me know. The next question would have been, tell us about your background and how you feel you will help as an alderperson.
Maybe I got a little too long-winded in the beginning.
I think we can skip that. Is that good?
That's fine.
I'm happy to expand.
Is there something you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I guess would be, you know, how would you help? I mean, how would you feel your background would help as an alderperson? Did you want to add anything else to that?
I think that, again, it's kind of started at a younger age for me, just wanting to get into leadership roles and be involved. So, that did really start even in high school. You know, I was involved in our student government and was student government president in high school. That carried into college. I have the degree in politics, which I think is kind of helpful in a situation like this. And then, just being as involved as I can, right? Getting out, meeting people, volunteering whenever I have any spare time, which is kind of few and far between these days, but I've got my HOA board role. So, yeah, I would-- does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone have a follow-up to either one of our answers?
I just have a question about-- and this may be for everybody. Do you think-- is that a conflict at all, being still part of the HOA?
I was going to ask.
And that's just a thought, because I was on my HOA and I--
So, legally, no.
Okay.
They're compatible.
Okay.
You know, how she manages her time is up to her.
Sure. So, you say legally no. Does that mean it's still kind of in the back of your mind?
So, you can't-- I couldn't be an alderman and be mayor at the same time.
Sure.
Those are conflicting positions. But I could be on the school board and be the mayor at the same time.
Okay.
I don't have time for that. Legally, I could.
Right. Okay. Good to know.
I do have a follow--
I think you would just be admitted on certain subjects, right?
Well, if there's something that would come up to your-- I mean, there's-- with any one of our jobs, there may be times where something comes up where there's a conflict of interest.
Sure.
And you would just recuse yourself from that point.
It makes sense.
Actually, I do have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Your background.
Mm-hmm.
So, you've said it a couple of times, and it's on your resume. So, when you, you know, back in 2006, when you went away to college-ish, you went for a degree in politics.
Yeah.
So, we all have, you know, these thoughts in our heads when we go to school, what we want to-- what do we want to be when we grow up?
Right.
You know, I went to school for criminal justice, and I own a printing company.
Sure.
Things don't always go the same way that--
That was my third major that I decided on.
So, what did you actually hope to accomplish with a degree in politics, if you could have picked anything at that time?
Sure. Honest answer, I'll give you a little back-- a little more background. I started off as a PT major. I got through a semester of that, hated it. Moved on to a psychology degree, or at least wanted to go for it. I did it for a semester, didn't like it. And I just happened to take a politics elective, and I just loved it, and that is kind of what inspired me to get my politics degree. It was more just, I loved the education. I loved being involved in student government, so that's kind of what inspired me to do that. As far as what I wanted to do with my politics degree, I knew I didn't want to be a lawyer. I didn't want to go through all that schooling, right? And as I kind of talked with my--
No one wants to be a lawyer.
Oh, no offense to any lawyers here. Sorry. No offense.
No offense. Everybody's guilty.
At any rate--
Jeff doesn't vote.
Perfect. Perfect. So, at any rate, it was kind of one of those, I talked to my advisor, and he had told me, he's like, you don't have to be-- you don't have to go, you know, run for office if you don't want to. You don't have to go be a lawyer. Some people go more into the nonprofit sector. And he's like, if you really enjoy politics, this is something that you really like, just finish your degree, do it, see where it takes you. So, I mean, now, as a small business owner of a daycare, no, I'm not doing anything with my politics degree, but I always knew it was something I enjoyed. So, again, I think that's what's convinced me to do things like the HOA board. And when somebody sent me the information about this application, I definitely thought to myself, here's something I actually could do with my bachelor's degree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just got a quick follow-up. I see on-- talking about backgrounds, Helen Bader?
Helen Bader?
Bader?
The Foundation?
Foundation? I'm not familiar with that.
That's okay.
If you could just give a quick, couple sentences of what it was and what you did.
Are you talking about my employment with Carroll University or Helen Bader Foundation? They're the ones who provided the grant money for my position at Carroll.
Oh, that's what it was?
Yep.
Okay, because I was looking under your coordinator at Carroll.
Yep, so I was a service learning coordinator at Carroll University, and that position was funded by the Helen Bader Foundation out of Milwaukee. So, essentially, we were just trying to get a service learning program going at the college, and that was going out and that was meeting a variety of nonprofit organizations in the community and connecting them to academic programs at the school and figuring out how we could get students volunteering in the community and have it be applicable to what they were doing in the classroom.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Hamel?
Good evening.
Hi.
What qualities do you believe make a successful alderperson, and how would you use them in the position?
Sure. I would say the number-one thing would just be a good communicator. That would be one of the things. I think that you need to be able to talk to people in a respectful way. You need to be able to hear people's concerns. You need to be able to see their perspectives. So, I think it's just being a good communicator and understanding that there are going to be all kinds of people out there who want to talk to you, and they're going to have different communication styles. You're going to-- I'm going to-- I have my communication style, right? I tend to be a pretty blunt, upfront, honest person, but I understand that sometimes that gets people's backs up. So, you need to be kind of aware of the people that you're talking to, get a feel for them, and understand just how to communicate with people. I think you also need to have leadership skills. That would be essential for an alderman. You need to get out there, and I think if there's concerns in your community, you need to be able to go out and reach out to people, see what they're thinking, and just kind of gather information before you come back to these common council meetings and make decisions. So, not only are you working with all the residents in your district, you guys all work together as a group. So, I think it's being able to try to effectively do that. And again, bringing your perspective to the table, but also understanding where everybody else is coming from and why they're voting the way they are on things. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Next question is, what do you see as a primary role as an alderperson? I know you covered it a little bit in the first one, but--
No, that's okay. To me, being an alderman, I would say you've got-- hopefully, this is the right answer. You've got two different roles. It's being a representative for all the people who live in your district. So, one of my questions later is going to be, what are the most effective ways that you guys have right for collecting information from the residents in your district? But it's representing the people, and then it's coming back and working with all of you as a group and figuring out how to manage all of the interests that people have. Yeah, getting just having, you know, not having an agenda and just getting things done in a fair way.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any follow-ups? All right. Alderman Terrence.
How's it going?
Good.
What would you like your reputation to be with the public as an alderperson?
With the public? So, you're talking about the people in my district or just in general? I think it's simply that I want to be an easy person to talk to. I've always considered myself a very friendly, outgoing person who doesn't get offended easy. I think that I am able to talk with a variety-- I think I'm able to really have a conversation with anybody. I'm not afraid to ask questions and be honest, and I'm willing to take constructive criticism or to listen and learn from people as well as be a leader. So, kind of be able to step into any of those roles. So, I want, as if I was the alderperson, I would want people to know that I'm very approachable and that I'm able to help, and that if somebody asks me a question, I'll go ahead and follow up on that and get back to them as soon as I can.
Great. I'm going to pass on my next one and yield to Deb, because I got a follow-up for her question, so.
What?
I just-- we'll move on.
Sorry. How would-- Ashley, how would you handle a constituent who complains that a certain city ordinance is unfair?
I have some experience with that, as far as HOA goes. One second. I would say, I would have to gather as much information as possible, but if there is an ordinance with the city, I mean, in my mind, the rules are the rules, right? So, it's not a matter of whether I agree or disagree, or I like the ordinance or I don't like the ordinance. I would have to work with that specific resident to explain to them that these are the rules. These are the rules that we have to follow. We need to be fair to everybody. When somebody-- I've had several people approach me in our homeowners' association, because we have a variety of legal documents. So, we have-- I've had some of this experience. They'll say, I really want a six-foot fence in my yard, but our legal documents only let us have a four-foot fence. And I'll say, I totally get it. I'm trying to understand your perspective. I get that, you know, when a car parks in this business and shines their light into your house, that that four-foot fence isn't going to do anything to help you with that. However, these are our rules. I can't change or bend them for one person. But then, I try to give them a variety of options for how to move forward. So, you can plant some shrubs. Maybe that's a good way for you to solve that problem. Or, in the past, several people have come to us and tell us and have said that they don't like the rules in our legal documents, and then my response is, if you don't like them, there's a process for changing them. So, we've had several amendments passed while I've been HOA president, simply because people don't like the rules. So, guess what? You walk around. If you don't like them, you can come up with an amendment. You can walk around, and if 75% of our subdivision agrees with you, you can pass the amendment, and guess what? The rule changes, and you can have your six-foot fence. So, I think it's just working with somebody. If they don't like the ordinance, what are the alternatives, and how can we work together?
And then, this is part-time, but how many hours do you expect to have to devote to aldermen?
Sure. You know, I actually called and I reached out to Alderman Kapusta, correct? Yeah. I reached out to him back in December, and we had a nice phone conversation, and I asked him the same question. I said, how, you know, what does your time usually entail for this? Right now, I work Monday through Thursday, and I've got about 36 hours a week that I work. So, really, I mean, to me, it sounded like maybe, depending on the week. This is a 10 to 15-hour commitment per week, 10 to 15 hours. Maybe it's more, maybe it's less. It probably depends on how your meetings go every week and, you know, what kind of things you have on your agenda. But that was my interpretation. Would that be about correct? Or am I off?
I have about five meetings a month. And I guess-- and I'm a realtor, so customer service is kind of what I do, too.
Sure.
In my regular life. But it's more or less, people can call you or email you at any time and just kind of getting back to people--
Yep.
--as expeditiously as you can.
Yes. Absolutely.
So, I don't know that there's set hours, except for your meetings, but I would say at least, you know, probably five to 10 hours a week total.
Yeah, which I think is absolutely manageable. Right now, I have Fridays off of work, so I am at home with my three-year-old. But I have Fridays off, so when I was talking a little bit with Alderman Kapusta about, it sounds like your meeting agendas or your agenda packet usually come out on Fridays, and then you'd have the weekend to do your research and make your calls before your Tuesday meetings, correct? For your twice-a-month Tuesday meetings?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that that is completely reasonable on my end, as far as my time commitment goes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Madden?
Hi. What do you hope to accomplish in your tenure as alderman?
You know, I think, maybe this sounds a little bit cheesy. I think I just want to come in here and provide some leadership skills and make a difference where I can, right? So, if there are-- I tried to do a little bit of research on some things that you guys have been working on lately, what you've been talking about in your meetings. So, I'm maybe a little bit aware of some of the issues that you're going over right now. I mean, essentially, whenever I get involved in a leadership role, I just want to make improvements where improvements can be made. And it's also, don't reinvent the wheel, right? So, if something's going well, I'm going to have to come in and, you know, fill in the shoes for Alderman Kapusta and hopefully do, you know, an equally good job for the things that are working well. I know that's kind of a vague answer. Did you want more specifics? And I think also selfishly, I love my role as a daycare owner, but I have also gained-- I've also really enjoyed my work as HOA president, simply because I'm working with adults. Kids are great. I love kids. But selfishly, I was also looking forward to just making, maybe taking on a more professional role and working with some more adults at the same time, if you want honesty.
Okay. Tell us about a significant accomplishment in your career. Describe how it was done and the difficulties you encountered.
Are you guys sick of me talking about my HOA role? Would you rather hear more about, like, in my actual, like, the paid professional career?
We write the questions. You give the answers.
I give the answers? Let's see. I think that starting-- can you repeat the question so I make sure I answer it appropriately?
Tell us about a significant accomplishment in your career. Describe how it was done and the difficulties you encountered.
Sure. You know, honestly, I think I am, as much as I say, oh, I love kids, but I want to work with more adults. I am really, really proud of my small business. I've been a small business owner now for about 10 years. When, like, as I had touched on before, when I first, when my husband and I decided we wanted to start having kids, I knew that I still wanted to be able to work. I needed to be able to work, but I didn't want to give my kids up, right? I wanted to be home with them. So, then it was like, okay, I think the best way to do this is start up an in-home daycare business. And as any other small business owner would know, it's hard to start that up and really get that going. And I-- this is not meant to be-- I've done a good job being a small business owner. You know, I've never had any issues filling any of my openings. I've never, ever had a daycare family leave me because they've been upset about something or there's been any conflict. The only reason the daycare family's ever left is because their kids transition out because they're going to school. So, I've been a really effective communicator with all of these daycare families, which is really important. I've really enjoyed the work that I've done. I've loved being home with my kids, and I'm actually very, very proud of the fact that I've been self-employed for 10 years, and I haven't really had many major hiccups. When I first started out, you talked about what's a difficulty you overcame. You know, when you first start out with anything, it was, okay, how am I going to run this small business? How do I get people in the door? How am I going to make money? So, the first year or two, yeah, it was kind of a shaky start, but once you get your name out there and I kind of figured out some marketing strategies, I had to learn how to manage my own finances. So, all of that is difficult in the beginning, but we got into a pretty good routine, and it's been successful, and I'm proud of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any follow-up questions? All right. If you are appointed, what are your thoughts about running for reelection or for election?
And that would be in April of 2025, correct?
Correct.
I think that, yeah, I'm absolutely interested. If I wasn't interested in potentially running for election, then I don't think I-- yeah, I wouldn't be here. I don't see this as a one-year thing. Obviously, I would have to come in, do a good job, and I would have to get voted in, and other people would have to agree that I've done a good job. But, yeah, it would be every intention of mine to run for election in April.
All right. Any follow-up questions for us or any following-- closing statements you want to make?
You know what? I do-- as far as my closing statement go, I just made some notes here. Again, I just want to reiterate, I'm a positive person.[1500.04] I like to be a leader. I think that I could really add some value to this group. I'm easy to talk to. I'm a good communicator. And again, I, as cheesy as it sounds, the main reason I'm here today is because I truly, truly love living in Muskego. When we moved here, we knew we weren't leaving for a really long time. We love our subdivision. I thoroughly enjoy all of the different businesses in District Four, so I think that I have just a passion to represent them as well as represent all the residents in the district. So that's really what's, what inspired me to to interview for this position today. It was just really my true love for this town. It's great. As far as questions go, I was just looking a little bit online at what Alderman Kapusta is currently part of. So it looks like you're part of the Parks and Conservation Committee currently?
Correct.
So is that something that?
You would get his, you would.
I would take over?
Yeah, in this case, I would appoint you to the same committee.
Yep, wonderful. And then I also saw on there you were on the Little Muskego Lake Protection and Rehabilitation District. Is that a committee or that's, what is that all about?
So legally, we got to check on that one. We probably have to, because that's a voted in position, so I got to find out how.
Sure.
And we'll let you know on that one.
Yeah. Great, I was just curious. And you know what? We talked a little bit about communicating with residents. I was genuinely curious. I have, as far as, you know, our HOA role goes in the subdivision, we have a Facebook group page, we have a website, we've got a semi-updated email list, right? But, you know, we have fairly effective ways of communicating with our residents. I am curious as far as communicating with all the residents in your districts, what are the best ways or what are the most effective methods that you guys use?
I personally attach to all my subdivisions the exact same way you do with your HOA. Get to know the council or the HOA presidents, get on the lists and.
Sure. Makes sense.
Yeah, and Facebook is good. I don't necessarily do like an all district email or anything like that. We do communicate through, I think, Facebook and then we have a newsletter that goes out.
Okay.
So.
Great.
Anyone else want to add to that?
I would say that the biggest thing that I I I learned for communication with people was when I actually went door-to-door campaigning.
Correct, yep.
So you build a good base with people and then people know who you are and then they call you and it just, I found it to be the most effective out of anything. I mean, digital is good. I really don't do it because people know my phone number and I just, you know, I get calls from out of my district as well because I've been doing it for a while, so.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree. I found the face-to-face is best whenever we got the opportunity either to try to pass amendments or, you know, in our subdivision, we got a new pool security system, so we had to walk around and hand out key fobs. And I was like, hey, I'll do that because then I actually got to knock on everybody's doors and make that face-to-face connection, which is very helpful.
All right. Well, thank you, Ashley. You're welcome to stay. You're the first of the three candidates, so if you're, after we interview them all, they'll be doing a vote and you'll find out.
Great. Are you talking about staying in the other rooms?
If you, yeah, just to make a comfort level for the other candidates.
Yeah, sure.
You get the pleasure of sitting in a room without them.
Thank you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Push the button.
Push the button and sit on it or push down on it.
Push the button down on the arm.
There you go. Now pull it out. Now pull it out. There you go. She went the wrong order.
What?
Uh, Jake was supposed to be next, but.
Oh.
Okay.
Lynn?
Wasn't sure the temperature in here, so.
We we never know either. That's right.
It's chilly, hasn't it, so?
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Rick Petfalski and the mayor of City Muskego. I'm going to start on this end for introductions.
Eileen Madden, District Seven.
Hi.
Deb Schrader, District Five.
I'm Jeff Wartle, City Attorney here.
Carrie Roller, City Clerk.
Tom Kapusta, District Four.
John Terrence, District Three.
Bob Hamel, District Two.
Rob Wolf, District One.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thanks for coming. So I was just going to go over the process if I find my notes here. Quickly, I know we went over it on the phone, but I'll just do it again quickly. Each Alderman will be asking two questions each, so you'll get a total of 10 questions. Anyone can ask a follow-up question to any of your answers. You will get an opportunity to introduce yourself. I would, I would suggest you keep that fairly brief because a lot of the questions will probably duplicate what your introduction is. You'll also be given an opportunity at the end to, you know, to kind of do a summation. So if there's anything from that you were going to have in your introduction that maybe you left out because thinking it was going to be a question and it's not answered, you have an opportunity to do that and you can ask questions at that time. As far as the process goes, after we interview all the candidates, we'll go through and do a vote. The, I do not, I don't, I don't vote and Alderman Kapusta won't be voting on this as well. You will be required to get four votes to be appointed. If, after the first round of voting, if somebody does not have four votes, the top two vote-getters would go, be brought forward. If there's a tie in, in, in any of that, we would do a revote until it changes that we do have two clear candidates. So hopefully that won't happen. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
I don't at this time.
All right, then we'll start with Alderman Wolf.
Didn't we, didn't she do an induction first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I'll make it very brief. My name is Lynn Cummings, resident of.
Can you hear me? Okay, I apologize.
My name's Lynn Cummings and I'm obviously a resident of Muskego and a part of of District Four. I'll just keep that brief since you all have questions.
All right.
How are you doing today?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good. All right. Why are you interested in the position of becoming an alderperson? And second of all, why did you apply for this position?
Why am I interested and why did I apply?
Right.
Sure. I truly enjoy being a member of the Muskego community. I've been a resident here since 2000 and I have a lot of pride in this community. So I felt with the, where I am in my life and my career and things like that, I have time to attend to something like this and I wanted to serve the community and give back. That's why I applied and that's why I'm interested.
That's good. Can you tell us about your background and how you feel it will help you as an alderperson?
Sure, sure. I graduated with a public policy and administration degree from UW-Whitewater as part of my resume. And for the majority of my career, I worked for the school district of Waukesha, also a public entity, and was a liaison to the policy committee for the school board. And that was part of my whole entire career, working for the school district. Was working as part of that committee, so I have a lot of familiarity with open meetings, public meetings, all those types of things.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions? All right. Alderman Hamel?
Good evening. What qualities do you believe make a successful alderperson and how would you use them in the position?
Could you repeat that?
Sure. What qualities do you believe make a successful alderperson and how would you use them in the position?
Qualities I believe are important are being knowledgeable about the community, understanding the position, as well as being accessible to the constituents that you serve. I also think it's important to be responsible and take the position, you know, very seriously, come prepared to all the meetings, reading all the materials, et cetera. And I think, you know, connecting with with constituents too, I think, is important if that's possible. We have all the the technology in this this day and age, but, you know, I I think hearing from constituents on on the issues that are in front of us are important as well.
Okay, and the next question is, what do you see as the primary role of an alderperson?
I'm sorry?
The primary role, what do you see as the primary role of an Alderman?
I think I've said it already, but the primary role is to be, you know, a responsible, participating member of the common council and being prepared and representing your constituents.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any follow-up questions? Alderman Terrence?
What would you like your reputation to be with the public as an alderperson?
Positive.
Not always possible with everybody.
I can't please everybody, right? Yeah, I think, I think it's important to be, you know, well-informed, have an open mind, well-rounded, things like that. Because of course, there's going to be issues that that not everybody agrees on, right? In this room, in this community, et cetera. So, you know, someone who, I want to be known as someone who has an open mind and can weigh, you know, the issues in front of me fairly and openly.
You said a couple of things that I sort of want to follow up on as part of this. You're going to have situations where you do have constituents on both sides. It's a challenging, difficult conversation to have. How would you approach that?
To a particular constituent, you mean?
Sure, whatever's coming to, I mean, in situations where you're going to have two sides.
Yep.
It could be one neighbor and then the other neighbor. It's going to create a challenge for you as a person that has to communicate with both of them.
Right.
And so in that situation, maybe there's skills in your background, maybe there, how would you handle that communication?
Well, you know, when I worked for the the school district, the school board policy was our, was our guide, was our, was our manual for how to run the district. And you have that as a city government as well, right? You have your your laws and your ordinances and your codes and things like that. So, you know, first and foremost, we look to that in any issue. But I think, you know, another part of my career has always been working with the public and working with people and I think that's a skill you just naturally develop over time. And that's something that I had to do with my over 20 years in in the school district is, is, is work with people. And, you know, a lot of times it's just, it's listening. It's listening to what they have to say. People value being heard, even if things don't go their way. So, so hearing both sides of it and just, just knowing that you, there's always going to be two sides to an issue and you can't please everybody, but as members, you know, of the city government, we're doing the best we can with the information that we have at the time. And I think that's how I would, would best handle it. But again, knowing that you can't please everybody.
Thank you.
Me?
Yep.
Let's see here, Lynn, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
How, how would you handle a constituent who complains that a certain city ordinance is unfair?
Well, I would first of all, find out and direct them maybe to the department that handles that issue or ordinance, you know, to, I would either reach out myself or direct them to that person to to find out more about it. And, wow, that's a tough one. I guess, as I don't know enough about how things get changed or things like that, but I would, I would work with them on finding out what their issue is specifically.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, since it's part-time, how many hours do you expect to have to devote to this role a week or a month?
How many hours do I think it's going to entail? Well, I know you have your meetings set for the, the council, there's commissions and and different boards and committees I understand that you're a part of as well. And then there's the time spent with with all the materials and reading up on everything and and dealing with the public and constituents. So I feel it's probably more than a part-time job. You looking for an exact?
No.
No, just, I'm, I'm prepared for it to be probably more time than two or three hours a week or whatever, you know, the meeting schedules and commitments are.
Okay.
I have, I made a time in my life where I have that extra time right now to devote to it, so I'm, I'm pretty flexible with what the needs and requirements are for my time.
Okay. And I just had a quick question too, if I can.
Yeah.
About her grant, grants operations coordinator. What do you, what, could you just kind of in a nutshell, what you're really doing there?
I, I work for the Department of Surgery at the Medical College of Wisconsin and there are physicians and and PhD scientists that are applying for grant funding for their research. Sometimes doctors only see patients, sometimes doctors see patients and want to further research in a certain area. And so that funding needs to come extra or externally. It can't be necessarily all supported by the medical college. So I assist with finding the opportunities for them to, to apply to and completing the applications and sort of being the liaison with each surgeon through the whole process of, of trying to apply for the funding, the application, and then, once they get awarded, to also helping them with that funding and the setup process.
Okay.
So.
So you, you have, you've done grant writing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I also did that in my position in the, the school district of Waukesha as well.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions? Eileen?
What do you, what do you hope to accomplish in your tenure as an Alderman?
I have seen Muskego grow and change a lot in the almost 24 years that I've lived here and I'm proud of that. And so what I want to accomplish is to, to be a part of the future of Muskego and helping guide and change and, and, and lead Muskego forward. So that's what I see.
Nice, okay. Tell us about a significant accomplishment in your career and describe how it was done and the difficulties you encountered.
Could you repeat that again? Thanks.
Tell us about a significant accomplishment in your career and describe how it was done and the difficulties you accomplished.
We took the school district board meetings, agendas, policies and all that online. It was a big part of, of establishing that. So all of your meeting packets and information, similar to how you have them online here with the city, except it's, it's more interactive and it's called Board Docs and that, that's the, the program that we implemented. And that was significant because we got away from all the paper and packets for the community and, and things like that. That was a several-year process to get that accomplished because there were, there were people that did not want that in, on the board and in the administration. And so I was quite proud to be a part of that and to lead that. And, and what was challenging was about, was that not everybody wanted to do it. Not everybody wanted the change. Not everybody wanted to go through the training and, and things like that. So it was, it was quite an accomplishment to get that done and I think it better served the community and the public and the taxpayers in that district because everything was available and online. Even as things changed, you didn't have to print another packet and have people come pick up another paper packet. You know, it was online and available and accessible to everyone. So I was quite proud of that.
Just as a follow-up, how did you manage those that were in conflict with moving forward with that?
There was significant offers of assistance with, with the transition to, to help them along, sort of side by side and, and things like that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
So if you are appointed, what are your thoughts about running for reelection in spring of 2025?
It would be great if I was chosen and I'm, I'm prepared to, to be a part of that in 2025 if necessary. I've seen, I've seen many elections in my time here, so I'm, I'm prepared to do that should it come to that, should I be chosen.
All right. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? You have a closing statement you'd want to make or anything you want to say for the board to consider?
No, I think we, we pretty much covered everything. I, I just wanted to thank you for having me here this evening and I, I believe I would be a good candidate for this position with my experience as being a resident in Muskego, coupled with my experience in, in public service, with how, how governments and public bodies work, open meetings and public meetings and things like that. So I thank you for your time.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we've got one more interview after yours. You're welcome to, I encourage you to stay and then we'll be going through the voting process on it and making a decision later this evening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you all.
Can we continue or do we have to run Big Lake quickly?
You could run, I was just going to say, why don't you run Big Lake quickly?
Okay.
Right, okay. Would that be not fair?
No.
Shouldn't we put that under stand for that?
If he wants to sit to the media, that's fine. We're just going to do Big Lake quickly. Yes. Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to do to get these people in and out quickly is I'm going to adjourn the committee of the hall, we'll do the Big Lake, get that out of the way, and then we'll do the last interview. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm putting us, what?
You do the adjournment?
Yes. So I'm going to put us in.
No.
Well, he can come in.
Oh.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So I'm going to put the committee hole in recess for, well, probably five minutes or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm going to put the committee hole in recess for about five minutes. We will move over to the We will move over to the Big Lake, bigger Muskego Lake District Board of Commissioners. And then we'll jump back and finish, continue on with the agenda for the committee of the whole. So at this moment, we're in recess on the committee of the whole. Now, we will reconvene the committee of the whole in a second as soon as the clerk catches up with us. All right. Jake? Thank you so much. Jake, have a seat. Thanks for coming out tonight and thanks for being patient and a little longer than we expected, but it's all good.
No problem. Thank you for having me out tonight.
I'm Rick Petfalski. I'm the mayor of the city of Muskego. I'm going to have us all introduce ourselves starting at the end.
Hi, Eileen Madden, District 7.
Deb Schrader, District 5.
Jeff Wurchell, City Attorney.
Kerry Roller, City Clerk.
Tom Capusta, District 4.
John Terrence, District 3.
Bob Hamlet, District 2.
Bob Wolf, District 1.
Thanks. I spoke to you on the phone, went over the process a little bit, but I'll just cover it again tonight. You'll be given an opportunity to give an introductory statement. Some of the basic stuff, like why you're doing it and all, will probably come up into questions. So if you could do that, you know, you don't have to repeat your whole resume on that part of it. You can if you want. Questions might seem repetitive then if you do that. You will be given the opportunity at the end if there's something that you weren't able to say in the beginning that we didn't ask in between. So and then each alderman will be asking two questions. Anyone can ask a follow-up questions to any of your answers. And at the end, you are the last one. So what we'll do is we will go into a vote at that point. And the winning candidate will need to get at least four votes from the council. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Why don't you start with an introduction of why you're here?
As you know, my name's Jake Schwer. Thank you for having me out tonight to interview you for this position. Basically, why I'm here. I grew up in Illinois. My wife grew up in Muskego. She's the one that convinced me to come back up here because she loved the town. I never really had a sense of pride. I came from a community pride. I came from a very big city. And after coming here and living here for four years, I get why people are proud to live in this town. It's the people that make it a great town and our small businesses we have. I used to have big box stores everywhere. So being able to experience it and actually be proud. And when you say you're from Muskego, it definitely means something to people. And they're like, oh, you live in Muskego. So that's the biggest reason I'm here is because I am proud to live here. And Alderman Capusta did help me at one point change basically an ordinance. And being on the side of a resident, going to a council member for help, I want to be able to give that back to someone else. Being able to step in their shoes. I can relate to them and I can definitely help them through a process that, you know, I was faced with challenges as well and I can relate to them.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman Wolf?
How you doing?
Good, good.
Why are you interested in the position of becoming an alderperson?
So kind of build off how I left it. Alderman Capusta basically helped me change the zoning ordinance of an unimproved or under-improved roadway. So that basically really taught me to understand kind of the due process and basically how the city operates. But also, you know, having patience, explaining the issue at hand, working with Alderman Capusta, but also our zoning department to explain the challenges and see what options are available. And through that process, it made me become interested to also then help someone else through a problem that they may have.
That kind of answers the next part of that question I'll skip. Can you tell us about your background, how it'll apply as an alderperson?
Yeah, definitely. So I went to school at UW-Stout, so by trade I'm an engineer. I'm also pursuing a master's degree in business. So my background is basically problem-solving. And I feel like part of being an alderman is also problem-solving for the residents. They may come, I'm sure, with a lot of different various problems and understanding that problem, but then connecting it to, is that problem as far as, you know, breaking a city ordinance we have? How can we help them resolve this problem? But also still support the city because we have to keep in mind, you know, what the goals of the city as well, as well as what they want to.
I just got a quick follow-up because of the background. How long have you lived in Muskego?
Four years.
Four years, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. What qualities do you believe make a successful alderperson and how would you use them in the position?
Definitely. So I think the number one quality is definitely just listening. No one's going to come into a position and think they know everything. So really listening and understanding how things operate and also what the residents want, hearing from them as well and seeing how that fits into the long-term strategy of the plan. Because the city does have a plan for five, 10 years out. So making sure that you're hearing the voice of the residents, but also striving to reach those long-term goals of the city.
Next question is, what do you see as a primary role of an alderperson?
I see the primary role is basically to be the voice of the residents. The residents elect the alderperson to make the best decisions they can that will help their district. So basically being able to be the voice of everyone in the district and make the best decisions for them.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
So you're from Illinois. You now live in Wisconsin. Does that mean you are now a Packers fan?
Every time the Packers play and they win, my wife asks if I'm ready to convert to a Packers fan.
That's not on the agenda. No, it's not on the agenda. I made that one up. What would you like your reputation to be with the public as an alderman?
Basically, someone that cares. I want to be known as someone who's there to listen to the residents' problem. He actually cares about us. I think sometimes you'll even see it on our main Muskego page. They don't think sometimes aldermen do anything. But really, they do play a vital role in the city. And trying to just relate to them and know they care or you care about them when they reach out. You get back to them as quick as possible. You keep them updated on their concerns. And you basically are their voice and their voice is being heard.
You're going to have difficult conversations with people. They're going to call. They're going to be upset. Most of them are. When you work through that, kind of, how would you handle a call like that?
The first thing is just listening to them, hearing their complaint, not basically telling them their complaint's invalid. You're validating their complaint. But you're also explaining to them the next steps you have to take in order to address their complaint. And honestly, their complaint might not ever be resolved. Their complaint, it could be still valid, but it's just working with them to the best resolution that you can provide is the biggest thing. And not everyone's going to be happy in the end of the day.
Thank you, that's for sure.
Any follow-up questions? Alderman Schrader?
All right. Hi, Jake. How would you handle a constituent who complains that a certain city ordinance is unfair?
I would first basically hear their side of the story, have them explain to me what they think's unfair about it. And then the next part would really be understanding what that ordinance means so they can actually understand how that ordinance affects them. And if it's something that they feel passionate about and if there is grounds to make a change or adjustment, it's having those discussions with the proper people to see if that warrants the case. And if it doesn't, it's letting them know that although you're happy to hear that they don't like it, it's explaining to them that this ordinance is not going to change. It's there for a reason. It wouldn't be an ordinance if it wasn't there for a reason.
Okay. And since this is a part-time role, how many hours do you expect to devote to this job?
I would say about 10 hours a week.
Okay.
Any follow-up questions? Alderman Madden?
All right. What do you hope to accomplish in your tenure as an alderman?
The biggest thing I want to accomplish is basically being able to help a resident with a problem or any problem that had come because it's basically giving back to what was given to me. So if I can help one resident solve a problem, I would feel very happy. But I wouldn't want to stop there. I would want to continue to help and basically make Muskego as great of a community as and continue that legacy for everyone.
And tell us about a significant accomplishment in your career. Describe how it was done and the difficulties that you encountered.
Probably the most significant accomplishment thus far in my career was filing my first patent. It definitely was a lot of challenges to try to have it, the uniqueness of it, without being similar to anything else, but also a lot of trial and error. And along the way, there's a lot of failing and learning. But what made it so successful was learning from every failure throughout the course of it and learning it's okay to fail, but it's the lesson that you learn along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Anything you want to share with us or any closing statements you would like to make?
The biggest closing statement is you probably see a very young kid basically here interviewing and be alderman. But I see the city is definitely changing. It's attracting a lot more younger families here. And I just want to have, bring a different perspective of someone young and someone that could potentially be, you know, bringing their family here as well.
Makes you feel better. I was your age when I was an alderman.
That's a long time ago.
Long time ago, yes. All right, so the process is, actually, I believe we'll have all three of you come back in, but we're just going to go through, the aldermen are going to go through a written ballot where they're going to vote for one of you guys. And you'll need at least four votes to be appointed. If somebody doesn't have four votes, the top two vote-getters will go into a runoff where we'll vote on those two. A what? Oh, yeah, yeah. Let me go through my process first and then I'll explain. Thanks. If there's no one with all four, the top two would go forward. If for some reason there's a tie, we'll have to do a revote of all three until there are two that have moved to be those top two. And then we would do that final vote. I was supposed to do my last question, which I failed to do. So if you are appointed, what are your thoughts about running for reelection in April of 2025?
I definitely would be doing it. I wouldn't be here today if it was only planned to do it for a year and a half, so I'd definitely be running for reelection.
Perfect, thanks. Any follow-up questions for us?
I do not, no. Thank you everyone for your time.
Christine?
Thank you.
Could you bring the other two candidates in? Thank you for coming. So you can have a seat in the audience and we'll go through this. So you all have them, okay. You all have your ballots?
They each have two.
So you have two, you should have two ballots with you? There may be an option where you have to do three, but hopefully not. So let's wait until the candidates come in and then you can bring them forward. Yeah.
I'm going to use this.
In case we need it, yeah. Well, do you have enough, do we have enough? We have to go to a third?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for your patience. So the aldermen will go through and cast their first rounds of ballots. We'll tally them and we'll see where we go from there. I do want to thank all three of you for coming out. For one, it's not easy to sit in front of, you know, seven people, eight people and essentially get judged. But, you know, I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate your love enough for the community to come forward and put your name in the hat. And regardless of what happens tonight, there is an election a year from April. So, you know, if you don't like the choice that the council makes, you can always take it to the people and run yourselves, which I have seen happen before. You know, happens, all different things happen, so. All right. And we have a... Yes. Jake, congratulations. You've been appointed, so. Any questions on us? So what we will be doing tonight is, this is the end of, we have different meetings. So the committee of the whole, or COW as we refer to it, is more of an informal meeting where we have discussions. The agendas are a little more discussion-based. That's what we put this part of the meeting in. And then our formal meeting is the common council meeting, which actually I will be adjourning to COW shortly. And we'll be going to the common council meeting. There is a resolution on there to actually formalize this, the appointment. So once it's appointed, are you swearing him in tonight or are you going to do it on the first? Okay, so what we would do is on the first, you would be...
Come in February 1st.
Yeah, so. Before then. So we would do a swearing-in before February 1st. So if you want to have your family here, you can, otherwise it's just...
Do you want to do it? I can, give me...
Well, maybe he wants his family here.
He probably does want his family here.
Yeah. So anyway, there'll be a swearing-in before the first official meeting. And you'll take office as of February 1st. Your phone will start lighting up. People from wanting to talk to you. Any questions? Do either, one of you two have a question? Okay.
I just wanted to make a statement. You know, thanks for coming out. You know, I have to say, you guys all prove that there are a lot of great people in Muskego, so.
Yeah, I mean, you all three did very well. It wasn't like sitting down like, oh, jeez. So we were very fortunate. That was my fears that we end up with only getting one candidate applying. We got three candidates, which made me, you know, pleased me. And on top of that, we got three good candidates, so thank you very much. All right, moving on with the agenda. Any communications? Hearing none, motion to adjourn would be in order?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, committee of the whole is adjourned at 6:23?